Thank you for coming to tonight's Green County Democrat Town Hall. This is our second Town Hall. We'll be doing this every month on the fourth Wednesday of the month. Tonight, we are featuring two of Springfield School Board candidates. We are going to do the same format that we did last month. It seemed to work really well. If you have questions, please write them down and then just raise your hand like Andrew did here, and we will pick them up. And then Jeff is going to be, Jeff Munzinger, will be our moderator tonight, and he will read the questions for the candidates. You can ask both candidates if you want the question going to both or ask individually. So if you have no further questions, I give you Jeff Munzinger.
Well, thanks, Debbie. I have this sense that our two candidates who are with us tonight, two out of the three who will be on the ballot, that they are ready for the election to come quickly. I know they've been to a lot of forums and spoken to a lot of groups around town, and so now we have, what, five days and a few hours until the polls open. I think I'm correct, so.
But who's counting?
So what we'll do, we'll collect questions, and then I'll present the question, and we'll pass the micro, well, you have a microphone there.
Yeah, and I think both of us actually project really well, so I'm, I think that we'll need a mic. Hold the mic.
Okay, okay. All right. As we're waiting to get some questions submitted, do you want to both just take a few minutes and tell us a little bit about yourselves? I know many of us have probably read and heard and things about you and your, what you do for schools now, but if you would take just a few more minutes and share with us?
I will go first. Is this good? Okay. My name is Dr. Sharita Thomas Tate, and I'm a professor at Missouri State University. I teach in the Department of Communication Disorders. I'm a speech-language pathologist. My passion is early childhood education and school-age language literacy. So I have been working in those areas for over 25 years now. I have worked as a school-based speech-language pathologist. And in Columbus, Ohio, where I worked as a speech therapist, I had to have a teacher's certificate. So I was on the same pay scale as teachers, and I was a part of the teachers' union just like the other teachers in the school. I've also worked as a researcher in the Detroit metro area, where I went to work with a group of, a research group that was focusing on the achievement gap. So we were working with families in the Detroit metro area, working with policymakers and with teachers in the community and families in the community, addressing some significant longstanding issues with achievement gaps in the Detroit metro area, particularly among African-American students and students from low-income backgrounds. I've also worked as a professor at Florida State University. I was there for several years before coming to Missouri State. And there, I was responsible for placing students in the schools, working as speech therapists. I did all the supervision for those students, giving them feedback on how to appropriately work with students who have language and speech difficulties and those who were in special education. I also worked with a group in Florida on a reading initiative, and as of this week, I just found out that my curriculum that I developed in Florida got published. So that's very exciting news. So I have experience that spans a lot of educational topics, a lot of experience working with literacy, a lot of experience working with language. I am passionate about literacy. I consider myself like the book lady. I have books in my, children's books in my trunk of my car, and I have been known to chase down kids in the neighborhood and say, "Do you want a book?" And I feel like the police are going to stop me at some point and say, "Are you stalking children?" I'm like, "I just want to give them books." But I really have a passion for literacy. I want to make sure that all of our children have the opportunity to learn how to read. It's such an important human right that I think is important for sentences in our world. I'm very involved in the community. I have a literacy program here in Springfield called UJIMA. UJIMA is a Swahili word that means collective work and responsibility. I believe that educating our children is responsibility of all of us, and I lived, I live with that in mind. I actually work in the community on a regular basis. I give my time, my talent, my money, my resources to children in the community who don't belong to me. I'm not, I've never given birth to children, so I'm not a parent by birth, but I am a foster parent. I've been fostering children in Springfield for about five years. The children who live in my home attend Northside Schools, and I'm concerned about some of the disparities in our district, not just with regards to North and Southside Schools, but with regards to some of the other disparities for students of color, students from low-income backgrounds, and students with IEPs. I think that I have a different perspective than many of the people on the board, and I think it's important that those voices and those kinds of experiences are represented. And I would like to be that person representing those different voices.
My name is Charles Taylor. I'm a professor at Drew University, and arguably for the first and maybe only time in my life, I want to channel Donald Trump Jr. I know, I know. All right. Hey, everybody, hold on. I am a loser teacher. My wife is a loser teacher. My daughter is a loser teacher. And quite candidly, I'm pretty damn proud to be a loser teacher, because it is the profession that most profoundly than any, more profoundly than any other, shapes the face of the future. And I don't think that's not, that's not even an arguable proposition in my mind. I've served on the school board for three years, so I'm in the kind of weird position for me of being an incumbent, and that kind of makes me uncomfortable, because I know that adds a certain kind of texture to my candidacy. But I ran for the school board initially three years ago, and it's the only reason I'm running again, because in many ways, my understanding of Springfield has always been and will always be through the lens of the public school system here. Because my first engagement, really, in Springfield was hauling a bunch of boxes into McGregor Elementary School, where I helped my wife set up her classroom 22 years ago, come August, and she's never left McGregor Elementary. She is still there. So in many ways, my engagement with the work that I do as a university faculty member, and quite frankly, she's forgotten more about teaching than I will ever know, and I think I'm pretty good. And I think I'm pretty good. So my fundamental commitment is always to the teachers and students of SPS. And one of my frustrations, quite candidly, as a board member to this point, has been that when we say SPS, I think our default assumption in many instances, as a community perhaps, and perhaps as an administration, maybe even to a certain degree among some on the board, our first assumption is that we're talking about the Craft Administrative Center. All right? I consider administration to be a necessary evil, all right? And I speak against interest, because I spent 12 years of my life as a suit, as a university administrator, as vice president for academic affairs. Now, in a second, I'll say why I think there may be some virtue in that. But the reality is that the real work of the school district, the real work of education at whatever level, happens in classrooms and laboratories, on performance, in performance spaces, wherever it goes on. It's the stuff teachers do with four and two kids, right? And having returned to doing honest work again and leaving academic administration about four years ago, I think that's been reinforced for me. So my first commitment, as I said, is to teachers and students. That will be the star by which I steer in everything that I do. The second commitment I have as a board member is to make sure that all of the things that we are, in which we are investing, those things that we are incentivizing as a district, are moving all the right needles in all the right ways to a large enough degree. And I'm not sure that that's the case at present, and I think we need to double down. And a couple of the needles in particular that give me concern, I think, and Sharita has been very clear and very passionate, very articulate, about the achievement gap. And it's real. I could prefer that it wasn't, and we have to own that, we have to address that, and we have to take it really seriously. I think the default assumption in many instances has been to try to explain it away. "Well, it's always been with us, it'll always be with us," or, "Well, it's not that bad." Well, it doesn't have to always be with us, and it is that bad, and I think we have to address it. And I think the key will be to ensure that all of the innovations that tend typically come top-down in the district, all of those innovations cannot simply pile up, because being married to a teacher, I do understand that a certain, at a certain point, all those things that you've got to do get in the way of teaching kids. And that may keep the needles from moving in the right kinds of directions, right? And I will have to acknowledge, as one of seven board members, I've got to own that, and I have to own that. But I think my voice is, is an important one at the board table, because I do bring that, that sort of combination of both administrative as well as academic experience. And the other thing that I think is really crucial, I know what I know, and I know that stuff pretty well. But I also know what I don't know. And the stuff that I don't know, I think the voices to whom we ought to listen to learn about those things are all those who are employed in classrooms. Frankly, not so much at KAC. So thank you for listening today.
Both of you are professional educators, and you've just told us a lot about yourself. Here's a question that really kind of boils it down. In a few words, why should we vote for you? And I know that might seem awkward, since you just told us so much about your background. But if you had to do it briefly, why should we vote for you?
As somebody in higher education, a few words is a hard gig, right? I am not built for the Twitter world. I would say it is that combination of profession and passion that I bring somewhat uniquely among the seven of us presently serving on the board, both higher education as a faculty member, as well as the commitment to serving the needs of all kids. I'm a first-generation college kid, right? So most fundamentally, I get that education is a transformational enterprise. And beyond that, I take what I do really, really seriously in everything that I do as a faculty member, as a board member certainly, but I very rarely take myself very seriously.
Anyone who's ever met me knows that I have no shortage of passion. And I am very passionate about the community here in Springfield. I was not really thrilled with living in Springfield initially. When I first came to Springfield from Florida, I was very angry with God and wanted to know why would he bring me here to Springfield, because this was not the kind of community that I thought I wanted to live in. You know, I've been doing research in larger cities that have larger numbers of minority students, and when I got here, I'm like, "How am I even going to do my research?" Because there's not enough minority students for me to do the kind of research that I've been doing, looking at achievement gaps. But what I recognize, that Springfield has the same kind of achievement gap that the larger cities have, which is problematic. And it's just as longstanding and persistent as it has been in other cities. And I think part of the problem is, one of the things that Charles has pointed out, is that there is a mindset that, "Well, this is just how it always is, and it's not that big of a deal." And for me, that's significantly problematic. And as a person who sits in those school board meetings, I hear the coded language about these mindsets that are really culturally incompetent with regards to how they're treating a whole sub-population of students that have not been given the opportunity to meet their highest capacity in this district. And I think it's time for someone to be on that board, to hold them accountable to the things that they say that are important, because they say that cultural competency is important, but they are not demonstrating that in their policy or the kinds of things that they're doing within the district. So, why should you vote for me? I bring a strong, experienced, rational voice with regards to the kinds of issues that are facing this district that are only going to get worse, because they have been longstanding. These are not new kinds of issues. This is not because the DSS's changed their test score standards, it's not because of any of those things. This has been longstanding issues that need to be addressed, and I'm here to hold the district accountable for those things, for particularly the disparities that we see in the district. I'm also very much committed to community and committed to students with disability. I'm a special educator by nature of being a speech therapist, and so I'm also very interested in that population, who also see disparities in our district, as well as students from low-income populations who have been demonstrating these disparities. We have two Springfields right now, and those two Springfields aren't getting equal access to a quality education. And so you should vote for me, because I care about those disparities, I care about all of the students in our district, but right now, like I've said before, there's a sense of urgency toward those students who have longstanding history of not achieving. And I have experience with working with that population.
Thank you. I know we have, I have, we have here tonight at least three former educators that I know of, public school teachers. And here's a question from one of them. "As a building administrator, I always appreciated school board members visiting my school and talking with me about issues. How often do you see yourself visiting schools and visiting with staff?"
That's a great question. I mean, what I know to be effective with regards to differences that we see in test scores starts with the administration within those buildings, that administrators within buildings set the tone for how things are going to play out in their schools. And so having strong administration makes a world of difference within those, for test scores in schools. So I think it's important that school board members have those relationships and connect with people in those school buildings on a regular basis. I currently do that as a community member. I currently meet with people and teachers and principals and staff members in schools, because I work with kids in the community. It's not a part of my responsibility as a board member, it's something that I do as a community member, as my, for my commitment to the kids who are in the community. Oftentimes, I'm meeting with them because they're facing challenges, but that's kind of why I've been doing that. But I think it should happen as often as possible. I understand that all of us, most of us, have full-time jobs, but as often as it can happen, I think we should be meeting with administrators, because they are the ones who are enacting the policies that are put forth by the board.
Having been in every instructional building in SPS over the last three years, I guess the answer I would say, I agree with, I agree with Sharita. The answer I would give is often enough, but not too often, because while we have day jobs, full-time jobs, so do principals and so do teachers. And the worst thing, it seems to me, that can happen is to disrupt the activity in such a way that it does more harm than good. So a couple of things that I would say are really important. The first is, when we go, we ought to go and listen far more than talk, right? And get a sense of the challenges that building administrators, classroom teachers, et cetera. And my guess is, it's probably not a good call to have that conversation with the teacher who's standing in a class of 30 kids, or 25 kids, or whatever the, they have small people to deal with, right? And dealing with a suit is not a good position to put them in. So in some ways, I think the frequency may be less important than how substantive the visit is. I think it is, it is, in some ways, it's worse than not coming at all if it's a drive-by tweet, right? We go in, we take a picture with the kid or something, we tweet it out, and then we're on to the next school. That strikes me as superficial, and I think that may actually erode support more than it might actually lead to a sense of, "We're all in this together." So as often as possible, but not so much.
A question I'm guessing you've been asked many times. Do you have any strategies or ideas about how we can raise test scores in Springfield public schools?
We've been asked, I think we've all been asked that question really, really frequently. To me, the first observation I would make is that I am deeply divided about standardized test scores themselves. They are a necessary evil. They are most fundamentally evil, because they, they mark a student, a living, breathing kid, as a data point at a particular point in time and space. And no human being, symbolically or otherwise, should ever be reduced to a data point, right? So I have a fundamental objection to it. That said, they are a necessary evil, because they are mandated. We have no choice to, than to administer test scores. So we need to take them seriously, but not so seriously that we lose sight, that learning can take many forms for many students at many times, all right? So in terms of strategies, the first is to not to assume that one size fits all, all right? If there is a mandate from the, from the Craft Administrative Center that you will all do this with, for, and to your students, and just fill in the different name of the principal or teacher, it will fail. It will absolutely fail, because just as teachers teach somewhat differently, learners learn differently. And kids bring very different sets of experiences and baggage with them to schools in various parts of our community. So it has to be adapted to the learners themselves, all right? And so I think any policy has to be sufficiently clear, that we're not sort of, we don't change the target all the time. Test scores matter. No, they don't this year. We want to go with problem-based learning, but not so much next year. We want to do this, right? So there has to be some kind of center that holds, right? The star by which we steer. But there also has to, while there has to be clarity, there also has to be flexibility in how we meet students where they are. I mean, I'm frankly in the privileged spot in the educational food chain. I mean, I teach college students. I mean, they do stupid things. I do, I did lots of stupid things as a college student. But they're, for the most part, a self-selected audience, right? And the baggage they bring to the classroom often is no more than a hangover, or whatever the case might be, right? We're not talking about the things that are true impediments to learning at that fundamental level. And I think any policy has to recognize that kids are different.
I have some very clear and research-based ideas about closing the achievement gap. Again, I have a bit of experience working with districts, including Detroit metro area, Columbus Public Schools, and Tallahassee, Florida, where I was in Florida State. So, some things. One, early childhood education, which, again, the district has made some efforts toward, let's applaud that, because it was a big thing, and increasing early education is one of the most important variables. I would argue also that we need to bump that down even further and get those before preschool, and starting, working with families early on to prepare their children for learning. Not necessarily teaching them skills, but preparing them for learning. And part of that is about working with the community, including people like the city council, to deal with some of the issues in our society, like poverty. Poverty plays a huge role with some of the disparities that we see that happen, starting in kindergarten, before kindergarten, all the way through 12th grade. I've talked before about the $30 million, $30 million word gap, where we have kids who enter preschool with the decreased vocabulary, and that doesn't close over time. You can provide those kids with enrichment, but if they start at a disadvantage, they end with a disadvantage, because the kids who don't come in disadvantaged don't stop to wait for them to catch up. They keep growing also. So that gap doesn't close, it continues all the way. So you have to start early, so that's one. The other is culturally competent and culturally responsive practices. And I'm positive that the schools are not using those right now, which is why we see the biggest disparity in our district with regards to African-American and other students of color. So, having some cultural competence, starting at the administrative level, because when you hear administrators in meetings presenting data, and they are washing over a group because they discount the group, you set the bar low, the students are going to rise at that low bar. And what I think has happened in this district is that we set a low bar for those students, because we have a lack of expectation for them. That's bad. That tells you what they think about that group of people when you set the bar that low. Now, I'm not saying that these are just fundamentally racist people, but these are definitely people who have a lack of awareness about what their thought process is about a group of students, how it sets them up for failure. And I think we've set them up for failure for a very long time. So that's another thing. Another thing that needs to happen is increased engagement. And there has been reports recently that one of the problems within the district is the lack of engagement between the district and many, many separate groups, including those who are under-resourced or underserved in any number of ways. I work with those, those families are the ones that I target, and my, my community work with those families, and part of it is that they don't feel a sense of ownership or openness from the district. So they don't feel like the district belongs to them, they don't feel like they're a part of the district, they feel like they're tangent to the district, they don't feel a sense of ownership to the schools. Those are all problems that can be addressed with building trusting relationships. There's a whole trust issue in the district, particularly with regards to those students who are from backgrounds, from low-income backgrounds and from families of color, who have longstanding history, because these problems, these disparities in the schools aren't new. So my grandmother graduated from Springfield Public Schools, and it failed her. My mother graduated from Springfield Public Schools, it failed her. My kids are in Springfield Public Schools. It failed, it's failing them also. So this district hasn't changed for many generations, and so there is a lack of trust and a lack of engagement and a lack of reciprocity between these families and the district that has to change. Another thing that I will mention is, is to create better in-school support for families, and that starts with the top of the administration within the school buildings. Good principals, like the one over at York, demonstrates that you have great responsiveness to the educational environment. So when you have leadership that sets out an agenda from the very top and expects their teachers to follow their lead, and their lead is one of a good place, then you have better outcomes. So putting in those principals into those schools who have the skills and the knowledge to deal with the particular issues within their schools, because every school is different, and they all have to have differentiated instruction kinds of things. The last thing I'll mention is this idea of evidence-based practice, is that when the district puts out policy, they have to get the input of the teachers, who are the experts, and the families, and the children, who are a part of the constituents, the people who are going to receive those policies and practices. When you put things down from the top without consulting the teachers and the families and the schools and the needs of those children in that schools, you get buildup of those kinds of practices that build up in the classroom. Teachers have to do all these things, and they're not going to do them, it's not going to be effective, because they didn't choose it, they didn't want it, and it doesn't work. That was a whole lot.
Thank you both for those.
Sorry, I can talk a long time about these things.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I think we all are excited to hear your responses. Here's a question from someone who is concerned about Springfield Public School libraries and says, "I am disturbed by the, what they perceive to be hostility to school libraries, especially elementary libraries." Quoting Dr. Jungman as saying, quote, "School libraries are the single greatest waste of educational real estate," unquote. And this person says, "My research reveals the opposite. Will you vote to keep them?" Meaning, the libraries.
I mean, I guess it's my turn to go first. And so I have, you know, now that I'm running for school board, you get emails from all kinds of people, kinds of people. And so one of, there was a person who emailed me and said, "I heard," and this is always how it's, "Somebody said, they said, they, they said that the new school buildings that are going to be built from Proposition S are going to not have libraries," kind of like apparently Fremont Elementary School has, apparently lined walls or lined halls with books. I don't know, I have not been to Fremont. And that they were concerned that the new schools will also have this kind of footprint, because apparently they believe that's what Jungman wants to happen. And I did ask, because I didn't know, because I haven't been in the district long enough to know some of these, the history of some of these things, and I was told that that's not the case. I can't say that it's true or not true, but I will say that, I mean, as a person who carries books in their trunk of their car, and whose garage is a makeshift library, I definitely value libraries and books. For me, what's more important is that children have access to books. Whether that access is in the hallway or in a, in a space like a room or a library, definitely has some pros and cons to go along with it. But the bottom lines, that children have access to books that are culturally relevant, have access to books that are grade-appropriate and age-appropriate, have access to books frequently, and lots of them, that's what's more important to me than anything else. However, if we have the opportunity to choose against library in a school and not library in the schools, I will always vote for library in the schools, because it provides a larger repository for books than I imagine that the other kind of model would. However, I have not looked at that research, so there's something I would have to research in more depth to understand some of the pros and cons. But for me, bottom line, access to books. If they have access to books, and lots of them, I'm okay.
If, in fact, that's a quote from Dr. Jungman, I will be honest, that's the dumbest damn thing I've ever heard. I don't want to put too fine an edge on it, and I don't want to be unkind. I've not heard him make that statement. If I heard him make that statement, it would be the only time I heard him make that, that statement, because I, frankly, I'm sort of baffled by that. While the, what a library looks like, I would agree with Sharita, what a library looks like is less important than the fact that there is a library, and that there are books, and students have access to those books. And it can't be substituted with a Chromebook. It can't be substituted by occasionally wandering through and just having a teacher read to a kid. I mean, you've got to muck around in books. I'm a book nerd, right? You literally have to engage physically, centrally, engage with a book in order to create that, the thrill of learning, the joy of learning, et cetera. And to be sure, those books need to be culturally appropriate, culturally relevant, et cetera. And I'm just, I'm, frankly, I'm just kind of gobsmacked. If anyone would ever say that a library is a waste of any kind of turf, particularly sitting in the library, for heaven's sakes, but that, I would just reject that notion But that, I would just reject that notion out of hand. And as someone who does sit on the board, I have also heard that they have argued that none of the buildings will have libraries. And I actually had this conversation, relatively friendly conversation, with someone in the community last night. That's just simply not true. I mean, I respect and value principled disagreement and principled advocacy on behalf of your opinions, but we can't make stuff up. I mean, we have the right to our own opinion. We do not have the right to our own facts. And we do have the right to have libraries, and we will.
I think that misinformation does stem from the fact that Fremont apparently does not have a library. And I think that's, that's the fear that is being spread throughout the community about if that was one of our more recently-built schools, then that might be the model for future schools. So I understand where the fear comes from, but it could be misinformation that's being spread. Again, I'm not sure whether it's completely true or not true, but I think that's where it stems from.
No, I understand where it emerges from. It's just, oh my goodness. Yeah, it's just, I don't think we disagree on that at all. Yeah, okay. Oh, say it ain't so.
And I'll share with you the perception, and you have a school board connection with law too.
Please do. I, I'm just, again, it's going to be hard to concentrate. I'm still stuck on that.
A question for both of you. Could you talk about the learning curve that may serve as a challenge for current school board members regarding culturally responsible, pardon me, culturally responsive policies and practices that work towards inclusive learning environments? I'll be okay.
I think there's always going to be a learning curve, because even with the best of intentions, and frankly, with all of my colleagues on the board, I believe they have the best of intentions. But we are, we are all, always already subjects, positions of one kind or another, right? We enter our thoughts about policymaking, whatever kind of policy it may be, because we're at a particular point in time and space, and we are products of various kinds of experiences. And I don't think that we can simply say, that's not true, right? I'm a blank slate. I'm not a blank slate. I think the key is to be willing and able to acknowledge the limitations of the perspectives that we bring to the table, right? And understand that it might be otherwise. I mean, perhaps with this audience, usually when I use this with my students, I realize I'm old because nobody gets this reference. Do any of you recall a character named Miss Emily Latella, done by Gilda Radner on Saturday Night Live, back when Saturday Night Live was always funny? She was the, she was an older woman who misheard things, kind of malapropisms, right? And like, what's this about youth? I won't do the falsetto, "What's this about euthanasia?" kind of thing. And she would say something like, "Well, what do you mean about these Chinese kids?" And then Dan, not Dan rather, Ackroyd. God, Dan rather, yeah, sure. Dan Ackroyd would say, "No, no, no, that's euthanasia, euthanasia, mercy killing." And she would respond, "Never mind." Right? And I always talk with my students about the Miss Emily Latella principle, the never mind principle. Which is to say, in the wake of new and better information and evidence, we have to be open to the prospect of changing our minds, and frankly, changing our hearts in some cases. And when we mess things up, we have to acknowledge that. So there is a steep learning curve, but I don't know that it's any steeper for a board member than it is any other human being in a different kind of situation. But if we insist that we get the, that we understand the world as it is, then we're never going to make progress. So we've got to be open to changing our minds.
So, I think that good intentions can be dangerous unchecked. And so, while the board members may have good intentions, their good intentions have been damaging groups of students within our district for a very long time because they've been unchecked. Which is why I think it's important that someone like me is on the board. Because there needs to be some checks and balances to those unchecked biases that are on the board right now. I'm not saying that they're bad people with bad, bad intentions. I'm sure their intentions are good, perhaps. But nonetheless, those intentions have left groups of our students within the district who are alarmingly doing poorly in school. So, with regards to that learning curve, I think when, I'm not going to say if, I'm going to say when, because whether or not it happens now or later, I'm going to be on that board. When I'm on that board, I believe that there will be a steep learning curve for many of the people on the, on the board with regards to cultural competence. Because I teach a course on cultural competency at Missouri State. And one of the analogies that I use is that, as a glasses wearer, that we all see the world through a view of, like a glass, like a lens. And that, I can take off my glasses, and he wears glasses also, but we're going to still view the world differently because we are going to be seen through these lenses in different kinds of ways. So, he can't use my glasses, and I can't use his glasses, because our glasses, our lens are shaped by our experiences. And so that shapes our biases and the way that we view things in the world. I'm not saying that they're bad people, but I'm saying that their view of things in the world are different from my view of things in the world. And given that there's a disparity between those who have and those who don't have, and those who from backgrounds of color, I think there needs to be some representation of people on the board who have that similar view to those students. So that we can have some checks and balances and say, "You're viewing this in a different kind of way that's not beneficial to these students." No one's doing that right now, and I think there is a need for that to happen, given that we see these disparities that have been longstanding and happening for a very long time.
Thank you. We have two questions that relate to charter schools. One asking, if you would just speak to the issue, there is much discussion in Jefferson City about diverting public funds from public schools to privately-operated charter schools. The second question asking, what are your, what are your thoughts about the same question?
So, I am, I am not, I am for public schools. Bottom line, I'm for public schools. Public education is very important for a number of students who will never have the opportunity to go to a private school or some other kind of, some other kinds of programming. I have been in districts like Columbus, Ohio, that has heavily relied on charter schools to supplement their public education. And it came at a huge cost to the public education. When you divert funds from public schools and you allow charter schools to use those funds, what you do is you create another chasm, another, another great divide. Because charter schools have the ability to pick and choose who goes to those schools. They have the opportunity to circumvent some of the curricular things and standards that are within, within the state. And this, again, creates a larger divide. Are there some good charter schools? I'm sure there are. But for me, the most important thing is that, what's the health and, what is the health of our public schools, and how do we maintain the health of our public schools? And we don't increase the health of our public schools by diverting funds from them and giving them to charter schools. It creates a greater chasm.
I would agree entirely with Sharita on this one. I've never known public education to be strengthened by privatizing anything. And frankly, I believe charter schools are, whatever their intentions, to sort of riff on the, sort of the best of intentions left unchecked, and I'm not sure necessarily most of the bills in front of the state legislature have the best of intentions, quite candidly. But I believe that they will simply siphon off funds that are already insufficient to, to fund in the robust way that public schools deserve at present. And it frustrates me, as a guy who studies language, it frustrates me that we often hear this discussion cast in terms of school choice, right? Because school choice is a seductive notion. Everybody's in favor of choice, right? But frankly, it's not that. Because as Sharita points out, charter schools, frankly, they can set their own entrance requirements, right? They can set their own curricular standards, and they're not accountable to elected boards of education, right? And that is a recipe for diluting our shared public commitment to public education. And that is a recipe for widening the gaps between haves, haves-not, have and have-nots, defining those things in multiple kinds of dimensions. And I also think that that becomes a bit of a Trojan horse for smuggling in some philosophical and political views that will not serve us well as, as a state or as a community.
Charles, this question is directed to you specifically as an incumbent. You mentioned that you act in the interest of students and teachers, yet you vote 100% of the time unanimously with other board members, which sounds like status quo. On what issues do you disagree with board decisions and vote accordingly?
Actually, it's not accurate to suggest that 100% of the time. There have been, there have been a couple of votes, right? But we're, we're, we would be splitting some pretty fine hairs in that regard. You know, this is, this is a question that I struggle over a lot. I do disagree with my colleagues on the, for example, the retention bonus paid to the superintendent. And I'm not going to talk about a personnel issue about a specific individual, but, but that would, those, those retention bonuses were actually being voted on at this time three years ago, during the campaign, right? And frankly, I think that signaled, it sent all, all kinds of bad signals that actually jumped up and bit us in the last bond campaign, because of some really big dollars, right? Very early in one's tenure. And so, my point here is more philosophical and pragmatic than it is about any given individual. I simply reject those as, as good policy, right? They're not Power Five Conference basketball coaches, right? Administrators have a certain shelf life, and we should not necessarily extend that three or four years into the future, right? So I think, I think that would be one. And while we, we may agree on, you know, as we almost always do, on budgetary items, the one thing that I would say is that there are a lot of things that don't come to the board table, not that they're being hidden. But for example, as we discuss budget, there are a lot of things that never show up because we have our moment to say, "That's just a really bad idea." Now, you can put that on the voting agenda, but if you do, it will go down in flames, or at least it will not be unanimous. And, and I realize as, as I'm saying that, I hear myself saying it, I'm thinking you're, in effect, I'm asking you to just trust me, right, on that one? But I guess I can't do anything other than that. I will be honest with you. As somebody who was a high school debater, a college debater, and for a while, a college debate coach, I really like disagreement. I think unanimity is way overrated as a virtue. And I would really like to see more robust conversations. And pending the outcome of the April 2 election, I will be having conversations about budget on April 3 or 4, or Sharita might be having those conversations about budget. And I think, you know, there are worse situations to be in than to have two votes for the school board, which I would, I would remind you of that. So I hope that answers the question as an incumbent.
Can I follow up on that even though it wasn't directed toward me? So, one of the first times that I met with Charles, when I first decided that I was going to run, he was one of the first people that I reached out to, and we had coffee. And one of the first questions that I asked him was this kind of same question. Because as an outsider looking in who goes to those board meetings, it appears as if there is unanimous decision by the board on a regular basis. And whether or not that's true, whether or not that happens behind boards, that is perception. That is the perception of many people within the community. And, you know, there, there appears to be this unified thought among the board members currently. And whether or not that's true, it doesn't change the perception of what happens in those meetings. And things happening behind closed doors, I understand that, but it doesn't develop a lot of trust with the community when it appears as if we're in agreement all the time with everything that goes on. So that's just the matter that I, you know, you and I talked about that.
Yeah, and I would agree entirely. And if it bothers you, I guess I would just say, it maybe bothers me even more, that that perception is there, and it is in fact real. And I think it is problematic. There are certain nuances, I mean, boy, the board meetings are heaven knows long enough. And so there, there has to be a fine line in there somewhere. But I would agree that we do need to disagree a lot more frequently.
Publicly.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all. And the other thing that I would say is, I really feel for the folks who come, who want to address the board, and who do address the board with some regularity. And those who are addressing the board on matters not on the agenda for that night, they've got to sit through a slog of a meeting very frequently. And the one board policy, if I were king of the board, I would change instantly, is that we don't engage with them, right? At a minimum, I look at them, right? I'm not even sure that that's always the case. And it seems unfair to me to have people come up and speak. I realize it can slide sideways in a hurry, and the meeting could go six hours longer if it's this sort of tit-for-tat and all of that. But at some point, it is, it is an elected public body, right? And if people want to peel our flesh back a little bit on occasion, that's the price of admission, right?
Absolutely.
And they should double our salary for having our flesh.
Your candor is so refreshing on all of these questions.
I was telling somebody, the longer I do this, the more candor I have. We've been doing this together for a long time.
It's been so interesting how many questions we've received from, from this group. And I know that we all have limited time, but, but I'd love to try and get to all of them, so we'll go quickly. Here's one that's very, very current. "What do you think about the bill passed in the Missouri House Monday that allows public schools to teach elective social studies courses on the Bible as an elective? That bill was sponsored by Representative Ben Baker and passed 95 to 52, and it awaits passage by the Missouri Senate."
I think it's dangerous only because I know that the Missouri legislator would not be open to other religious practices being taught as social studies. And if that's the case, then it's not fair. So, you know, while I am a Christian and while I believe in the Bible, if it's not as living in a democracy, if we're not allowing all different religious backgrounds to be taught in social studies, then we should not allow just one.
I would agree entirely. In fact, I think there was an amendment attached that was voted down that would have opened up public school curricula to, with the Torah or the whatever. Yeah, the Quran, exactly. I would agree entirely. It's, if it was simply a matter of a wider diversity of perspectives, I might, I might be less concerned about it. But it's, it's not, frankly. It's, it seems like, it strikes me as a Trojan horse, that in some ways probably cheapens faith, it doesn't strengthen faith, it cheapens faith, because that's the point of faith, right? That you believe in the absence of, or maybe even in spite of, evidence to the contrary. And, and I believe that we need to be mindful of being inclusive, and frankly, be mindful of the Constitution, for that matter. I mean, and so there are some constraints on that.
Thank you. "There are measures of success that do not always show up in achievement scores. How do you measure success?"
You know, I would agree entirely with that. And in sort of apropos of where I kind of started about standardized test scores being at best necessary evils. I think one of the keys is, by whatever metric, right, whether it be a standardized test score, or assessment by portfolio, or whatever the case may be, if we reduce our assessment or success, right, the assessment of success, if we reduce it to a particular point in time and space, we're making a terrible mistake. That's efficient, but it's also not very smart, it seems to me. Because I think the growth is a much more important determinant of success. Because, you know, and I would sort of, sort of riff on my experience as a university faculty member. It's one thing to take, you know, that really bright 36 ACT kid who comes in here and maybe graduates up here, right? As long as we don't screw them up, they're going to be fine, right? They're going to do some extraordinary things. But it may be the student, you know, and now coming back into K-12, a student who comes in with a whole lot of challenges, right, and may have, the beginning of the year exam is here, and maybe at the end of the year is here. He or she is going to be viewed as, not as successful as the kid who came in here and wound up here, right? But the, but the value added of the learning experience here is what ought to be driving our evidence-based practices, to use, to use that phrase, right? Because it is in fact adding intellectual, cultural, and human value. So I think improvement is much more important to me. The trajectory or the trend is infinitely more important than the data point.
So, I have a lot of problems with standardized testing. It is notoriously biased, and there's lots of evidence to support that, both at the K-12 level and at the university level. I'm arguing right now in my department to get rid of the GRE as a measure of allowing students to be in our graduate program, because there's no evidence that students who have better GRE scores are going to do better in our program. There's just zero evidence, zero goose egg. And that's lots of research to support that. So, there are so many problems with standardized testing. What standardized testing measures is your ability to take a test, and measures your, your standing within a community, because the information that is on those tests is biased towards those who have different kinds of experiences. So, I mean, there's just many problems. So what do we do instead? I think there's lots of things that we can do instead of using standardized test scores. One of those being some kind of dynamic assessment, where we are looking at students' ability to learn, not necessarily what they enter this classroom with. You can have 10 class, 10 students who enter a classroom, and they're all going to enter the classroom with different kinds of skills. And we can have a test that has a benchmark of here, but some of them are going to start above that, some are going to start a little bit above that, some are going to start right at it, some below it. And then, when you, when you give that test, some of them, you know, there's going to be all this variation. You can say, "Oh, this kid is really low." Well, he entered the classroom with a different set of skills that was already, you know, putting these kids ahead of them before he even started the classroom. Go back to that $30 million, $30 million word gap. So you already have this divide that is already there. So you already have this divide that is already there. So instead of looking at their ability to meet these benchmarks, you look at their ability to learn, you know, how much effort, how much scaffolding is necessary for the student to get to whatever net level we need them to be at. And then you use that, then you use that as a stepping stone of how much growth they should be making based on their learnability level, not necessarily on meeting some pre-prescribed benchmark where you have kids who are entering the classroom with different kinds of levels from the very beginning. That is one measure. I think there needs to be lots of different kinds of assessments, portfolio assessments, you know, performance assessments, and not just one kind of assessment. We put too much value on standardized testing, which is inherently biased.
I can just say from personal experience, I agree with you. Back in the day, and I don't want to tell you how many years ago it was, when my wife and I were students at the University of Missouri, she, as a Missouri native, did not have to take the SAT or the ACT, or, yeah, she was admitted, and she did just fine, as I'm sure a lot of students did, so.
Should we just drop the GRE for our master's program too, precisely that reason? It doesn't predict anything.
Zero.
I was in a master's program, I don't, I'd probably taken 12 hours towards a degree, and somebody said, hey, you didn't take the GRE. You have to take the GRE. Well, you know, I had done fine up to that point, so, anyway. Okay, we have to keep moving quickly. I have, this is a question. Someone's concerned about curriculum and instruction. I've been alarmed by the seeming lack of attention to research and evidence-based decision-making, especially as relates to curriculum and instruction. Why have teachers replaced desks and chairs with furniture and then reversed the directive? What evidence supports the effectiveness of Chromebooks to support achievement, and what is the evidence supporting open classrooms in elementary schools?
Again, so, there's a lot going on there, and I think a lot of time, you know, we've talked, I've heard Charles talk about it, and I've talked about it again, that we tend to be innovation-heavy in Springfield public schools, where we have all these new great ideas, the new and the best and the brightest new ideas. And again, I believe that there are some students, no matter what you give them, they're going to learn, they're going to do well. But there's a whole lot of other students in the classroom who need structured environment. Some of the basic things that we know are tried and true in practice. We have lots of evidence to support them. Some of the newer innovations are great innovations that work with some populations, but it doesn't work with all populations. But it's kind of like this idea, again, go back to the reading wards, which is my area of expertise, is literacy. We have the reading wards, where you had some who said whole language, and some said direct instruction. And the reality is that whole language works for some, but direct instruction works for everybody. So why would we use whole language when it only works for some, when we can use direct instruction, which works for everyone? That's how I think about innovation in the classroom. We have innovation in the classroom that can work for some, but it doesn't work for all. We have some other tried and true basic traditional teaching approaches that works more for everyone. Still needs to be differentiated, but works better for everyone. I think oftentimes we have, again, policy that comes down from the top that hasn't taken into account the teachers' experiences and what they know works and doesn't work in their classrooms, and what the needs of their classrooms are. You can't have these directives that don't take into effect the whole continuum of evidence-based practice. And so Chromebooks and all those other innovations, great tools can be useful in some classrooms, but they should not be the vehicle driving education, they should be tools that support education and not driving it. For educational curriculum instruction, we should use things that are tried and true, research evidence-based, that has happened for a long time, that teachers can tell you have worked for their classrooms, and families can tell you that they work for them also. We can add some other things as supplemental, but not our major driving force.
I mean, I think I would, I would start with something that Sharita said, that Chromebooks, open classrooms, all of those things, those are means to an end, right? And they either will be successful means to an end, or they won't be, right? And that's where the evidence-based practice comes in. I do know there's been a lot of discussion about Chromebooks, and for a whole variety of reasons, that it, you know, we've had some stuff that we don't want kids to see, et cetera, et cetera, and if we need stronger filters, we need stronger filters, right? We need to get that stuff out of there. And open classrooms, that strikes me as, in some ways, the exception that many people suggest proves the rule, right? Quite candidly, I think open classrooms, just like open offices, are walking right up to the edge of being a fad, kind of the shiny object sort of thing, and it's like, ooh, let's try this. And that's my frustration with trying to follow the latest, simply because it's the latest, and will be noticed for being current and hip and those kinds of things. I mean, I'm not old-school in everything. Quite frankly, learning is an area in which if our biases are too absolute too quickly, we're going to miss something. Whatever is important to help a kid learn, we ought to be open to doing. Once we've done that, we need to be sure that those needles are moving in the right direction. And if they're not, then we need to adjust course. I find it, I'm really uncomfortable when I hear some folks out in the community, and occasionally around the board table, saying, this is how teachers ought to teach, right? We've got some smart people around the board table, but they should not be making decisions about specific curricular innovations, et cetera. We have to hold them accountable, right, for the folks who are making those judgments, and if we need to change course, we need to change course. But I worked with the Board of Trustees at JURY for a long time, and sort of using the equivalent of the Board of Trustees and the Board of Education in this circumstance. The board can be really, really helpful, but not too much, right? And once you invite them in to start dictating kind of curriculum, et cetera, it's hard to make them go away, right? And there are lines they should not cross when it comes to, I think, hamstringing the independence and the autonomy of teachers in the classroom, at least at the building level, right? We need to give them the freedom to use the tools and the resources to have those tools that there is evidence to suggest, and then we need to make sure that they work, right? Again, I think boards have to know what they know, and they have to know what they don't know, and they should never confuse those two things.
One more question. And sometimes I worry that we expect you to know everything about everything, right? But it says, if you alone could set the top three action items for 2019, 20, what would they be? That may not be a fair question, but that's...
I'm sorry, would you?
If you alone could set the top three action items for Springfield public schools in 2019, 20, in 2020, what would those three be?
First, vote yes on April 2 for Proposition S. Not because Proposition S, not because facilities are the most important thing that we do, because facilities don't teach kids, Chromebooks don't teach kids, but facilities can get in the way. And I think Proposition S sort of embodies a number of the themes that we've talked about here today. Facilities being part of it, equity being another part of it. And so we need to address some of these issues that will, at some level, help us penetrate below to some of those trust issues that I think are very real. I have no spatial sense whatsoever, but I would observe that all of the construction or renovation that would be funded by Proposition S, you start at Sunshine and you go north, right? Is it enough? No. Is it a start? Yes, I hope so. So that would be, that would be number one. Number two, I think we need to have the courage and the wisdom as a district, as a board particularly, to learn something from the process out of which Proposition S emerged, and that is, that line between the district and the community has to get really, really fuzzy, if not invisible. I think meaningful community engagement, not kind of showpiece dog and pony shows kind of things, right? Because those are worse than doing nothing at all, it seemed to me, right? If we, if we sort of insult people's intelligence with set pieces. I think we have to be willing to listen, and I think that needs to take tangible form, because that community task force model really got us to a point where, I didn't say this two years ago, but I'm really glad that bond failed two years ago, because this is much, much better. And we cannot unring the community engagement bell. So that's the second priority. The third priority is frankly, and I would say this, not just for 2019, 20, but generally speaking, we have to provide the support and the resources to enable the teachers in our classrooms to do what they do extraordinarily well, support them, and get out of their way, and just get out of their way, and then celebrate them for all the good work that they're doing.
I shouldn't have let Charles go first because he took all my points. So basically, I agree with him. Equity and access are at the top of my list. Equity, it goes towards buildings, equity goes towards the disparities in test scores, equity goes towards resources, equity goes towards all of those things. And there's so much inequity in the district, so that would be one of my number-one priorities. When we talk about inequities, we're not just talking about buildings, although I do, I do support Proposition S because facilities is one of the first steps that needs to happen. Again, I'm a foster parent, the kids who live in my house, we're at Hillcrest Elementary, Hillcrest High School and Jared, a middle school, and those facilities are not on par with some of the other schools in the district, which is, not just not on par, they were dismal. I mean, like, my foster daughter talked about not having heat and air in her school on a regular basis. You know, those are just not, those are things that are not acceptable. So equity will be one of my big issues. You know, engagement also is high on my list. I think that the district did do a better job with this proposition. However, I am not as confident as Charles is with regards to unringing that bell. The district has not had a very strong history of engaging the community, so while they did engage the community for Proposition S, I have not seen that level of engagement on much of anything else within the district, so I'm not as confident as Charles is with regards to the district's ability to maintain that high level of engagement. So that will be something that I would also be pushing for also, is to increase that level of engagement. I do feel like we're very top-heavy in this district with regards to policy and procedures in not including teachers, who I support very much also, and families, who I also support, who I think are often left out of the equation. And I think that lack of including the parents and the families into the equation is because of, again, this maybe unconscious bias that exists on the board with regards to level of expectation of what these parents and families can contribute. And whether or not you agree with that, again, I sit in these meetings and I hear the coded language about how they view these certain populations, and their way of viewing them is now, you see as a result in their policies, and so that's a huge problem for me. So equity and access, and then engagement would be my second one. And my third one, my third one is definitely, you know, goes, it kind of crosses all of those, and it's this level of cultural responsiveness. And I know that sounds like, you know, maybe just cliche because it's something that I talk about, but right now Springfield has about 25% diverse population in the elementary school level. It's growing in Springfield, and when we talk about diverse populations, we're not just talking about African-American, we're talking about lots of different things. And I think, I think that the level of competency that is presented in the classrooms, and again, it starts for me at administration level, because those policies roll down to those principals, who roll it down to their teachers, and then you see it played out in the classrooms. I think we have to improve that on a significant level, where we're just really erasing some of the things that we've done in the past and starting fresh with regards to cultural competency, which includes increasing the number of people of color and other diverse groups who are represented within the district, which right now are at dismal numbers. And that starts, again, at administration level, and also down to, at school-based levels and classroom level.
Dr. Sharita Thomas-Tate, Dr. Charles Taylor, thank you so much for sharing with us this evening. Thank you to the Greene County Democratic Party for hosting this event, and we will continue with forums here, monthly proceeding forward, so we hope you can join us again. And I counted the hours. We have about 135 hours until the polls open. Can you believe that?
I can't wait.